Billy, you're up first this time.
Okay.
Here's the question. Public policy often involves issues about which people disagree. Give examples from your past experience where you have worked collegially with people who did not share your views.
Well, number one, Jack Street Bridge. They didn't want to do anything with it. They just let it set and set until it rotted and fell apart practically. So, that's the biggest one. It took over 20 years to get them to get the money together to build it. So, there's a lot of other things in this town that they don't want to listen to. What the regular citizens in this community has complained and complained about it, and they're still not coming forth with and actually doing what they've asked them to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. Public policy often involves issues about which people disagree. Give examples from your past experience where you have worked collegially with people who did not share your views. It's kind of playing nice with others.
Uh-huh. I guess my eight years on the council and a lot of those involve sidewalks. And I think this, the people that are here that are on the council or know sidewalks know that. You know, those were tough meetings and hopefully, I think we've maybe put that behind us and we won't have to deal with those and we don't have to deal with things like the geese in the park. That was some other ones. But, you know, there are items. One was, I guess, the Super Walmarts and Sam's Club coming to town. That took a lot of planning and a lot of meetings and a lot of interaction and a lot of give and take. And we learned a lot from that. That was probably one of the biggest and most controversial developments that came about with my term on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
Well, this is actually now my first time running for office. I've ran for city council before and I've ran for several other offices. I'm actually right now running for city council and county supervisor. And previously, I ran for office in Dane County as a Republican. And I went door to door. I campaigned hard. I talked to the constituents and talked, hit a lot of doors and talked to a lot of people. And I received over 49 percent when I was running for county supervisor and I received about 45 percent when I was running for city council. So, working in an environment where, you know, most of the people don't hold the same kind of views that you do, I was able to convince a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Jim?
Well, one of my very first meetings was 130 people for the sidewalk issue, so I was indoctrinated there very quickly. But I have a history of being able to work with people, discuss with citizens that were their disagreements. For example, the fire station. We dislocated, the city did, nine residents. I went over to that neighborhood and I talked to each one of those residents over there and discussed their feelings and listened to them. And I think it made an impact. I would hope with them that the city was not out to get them, that we were going to be treating them fairly and what the need was. And I think they, I became friends with several of those residents. But you have to do that. You have to get out and talk to people. I have done that.
Thank you, Jim. Rich?
You know, it's interesting. There must be a perception that every member of the city council, seven of us, agree on every issue. And I can tell you for a fact, that's anything but true. What we have found in my year on council and frankly, a lesson I learned in my 25 years of public service as a municipal manager, is that it's okay to disagree. Let's have meaningful dialogue. Let's try and convince each other, but let's not be disagreeable in the process. So, that's my rule of thumb. It's okay to disagree. Let's have dialogue, but let's not be disagreeable.
Thank you. Rich? Jens?
Yeah. So, I've held the job ever since I was 13 years old. And in my years in the workforce, I've learned one thing, and that's that communication is key. As you're working with different folks from all different types of backgrounds, you have to talk and see where they're coming from with their viewpoints. Because especially with something like the city, I truly believe that anyone up here and pretty much most of our citizens, all want only the best for our city. So, understanding where everyone comes from, I think that gives a lot of insight as to where we're going to go forward.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
Thank you. Number one, it starts with respect and an understanding. Previous experience, I'll use my experience as a professional in purchasing. And currently, I work with a number of brilliant people in different departments and they all have the best ideas and yours isn't. You know, what we need to, what we do is we talk. We understand everybody's reason, rationale. Are there winners and losers? Yes, there are winners and losers. But we look at the bigger picture and it's for the benefit of the company that we work for. It will be the benefit of the city we live in if we treat each other with respect, listen, and come to agreements.
Thank you, Steve. So now we're changing the starter this again. It's going to be Paul this time. So, Paul, a recent referendum defeated an increase in taxes to financially support the repair of our city streets. The streets remain in disrepair. What do you propose as a way to fund the repair of our streets?
Well, if I knew the exact answer to that, it would be a shoe-in tonight. It's going to be difficult. I think we do need to do another referendum and I think we need to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted and that we are able to sell it to the citizens of Janesville on why we need and why we need the money and exactly what it's going to be used for and nothing else. So, they know exactly what they're voting for. And if they vote it down again, then we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. But then they'll have to understand that the roads are not going to get fixed for some time until we can figure out how to get the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
Well, obviously, roads, transportation is, should be a number-one priority and we need to look at every department, look at every dollar that's spent, make sure it's being spent efficiently. We need to make sure that we're living within our means and make sure that we have the infrastructure necessary to create a business-friendly environment, make sure that new companies are going to want to open up shop and make Janesville as prosperous as possible.
Thank you. Jim?
The council has wrestled with this problem quite a bit in the last few years. We came up with a combination of increasing the wheel taxes and borrowing money. I don't think, I think any future remedies for this problem will require a combination of financing techniques. I think the council that we currently have is committed to building, to restoring these streets. We're not going to take that back down to the prior levels. We can't. Otherwise, in five or less years, we're going to have a lot of streets that need repair. A referendum, I'm not against eventually doing that again. I think we need to do a better job of educating our citizens why we want the referendum and I think they'll vote accordingly.
Thank you, Jim. Rich?
In this past budget, we were able to double the amount of money that's going to be going into road repair, road maintenance, road replacement. We were annually doing six to seven miles of roadway within the city, which was not nearly enough to keep us in line to getting through all of our city streets in their lifetime. We doubled that to 12 to 14 miles. We did that with a balanced budget. We did that while preserving our priorities of public safety, police, and fire. We did that by maintaining our priority within the public works area, clean water and everything that's about public works. So, we've got a solution in place. Let's see how long we can make that solution work. We're making progress. It takes time. I'm excited to see construction season arrive fairly soon now. And if you're on Milton Avenue today, you saw it.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
Yeah. So, I met with city manager Mark Freitag and we had talked about how right now, there's something going on in our state that's called shared revenue. And Janesville is getting kind of the short end of the stick on this one. The way it works is that they, they take money into a big pot from the state and they divvy up throughout the communities in our great state. They're using numbers that I don't believe are correct. They're using numbers from the early 2000s. I don't know about you folks, but I definitely think Janesville's changed since the early 2000s. If we update those numbers that the state uses, we would be able to go ahead and get a lot more money coming into our city that we could use towards road repair. Now, I think the way that we do this is we, the city council, as members, we talk with state legislators and representatives, one of which I see quite frequently. And I'll definitely be the first to say, I'll put a bug in his ear and make sure he knows that Janesville deserves the money that we send, our fair share that we see back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
Thank you. Short-term, the referendum that was put forward previously, as Paul mentioned, in my opinion, wasn't worded well at all. Not supported that. That being said, would I consider a referendum, short-term, to repair roads if written properly and understood thoroughly where it was going? I absolutely would. Long-term, you know, Jens mentioned, shared revenue. There's a lot of political capital that needs to be handed out in Wisconsin and frankly, I don't know if that capital's ready to be handed out. Shared revenue is one way to do it. A potential of working with the state to allow municipalities to offer up a half percent sales tax could be an option for a strategic plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Billy?
That's the same question you gave me last year. And I showed you guys last year a little thing about a half a cent that I found that the salt had ate in the parking lot and everything else. And I had it and I showed it to you. And which, that half a cent, if we could have the state let us go ahead and charge a half a cent sales tax, have it for three years and then a sunset clause for an extra two years, just in case we need it. That way, we can get our streets and roads up to, and our bridges can get them up to the, as best as we can at that particular time. And then after that is done, we can stop it. But at the same process, we do not use, do not have the wheel tax. We drop that on the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Our starter this time is Spencer. The question is from the audience. Describe your impression of the city manager's management style and tone.
Well, I'm not an incumbent member of the council, so I haven't had as much experience with the city manager. But from the short amount of experience I have with him, I believe he's got the right tone and he's doing a good job.
Okay. Thank you, Spencer. Jim?
I've worked with the city manager. I was on the hiring team for the city manager. I've worked very well with the city manager. I think he's very professional, hardworking. He's come up with, he's initiated a lot of new ideas. I think he's making a lot of good moves in the city. I enjoy working with him. I meet with him every couple of weeks. Actually, tomorrow, we'll meet with him. We meet every couple of weeks to discuss issues. He's very receptive to my concerns. He's not, you know, trying to, he basically knows the council is directing him. And I give him my input. I respect him. I think he's done a great job and I think you can see the results if you look at the progress in this city in the last few years.
Thank you, Jim. Rich?
You know, it's always interesting to be asked to do an evaluation of an employee's style and tone amidst of a public meeting. And I can sum up my reflection on the city manager really simply. I sat on the selection, citizen selection group that interviewed all of the candidates. He was the absolute choice of the citizens' group that interviewed the candidates. We reported that to the city council. What impressed me most about Mark at that particular time is the same thing that impresses me today about Mark. He is a born leader. He is a very, very brilliant man who is a team builder and he communicates exceptionally well, both externally and internally, with staff as well as the council.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
Yeah. So, I've met with the city manager many times now. And one thing that's always impressed me with him is he does have a plan and he'll show it to you, you just have to ask. And that's key. We may not always agree with what's in that plan. I'll be the first to tell you that. But the fact that he has one and he's willing to come to the table and talk about it is something that's to his credit. I think that we need a direction as a city going forward, a vision. And I definitely believe that Mark Freitag has a vision. As far as how we go about that, that's why the voters elect a city council and we can help guide what, because we all want Janesville to succeed.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
One thing that's impressed me about Mr. Freitag since he's come here is that, number one, when he got here, he said, there's stuff that we debated, it looks like it debated for 10, 15 years, staff. Is this worth pursuing? And he empowered his staff to go look for the answers and come back and say, you know, this really isn't worth kicking down the road anymore. We should put it to bed. Or, let's pursue this and get it done. And some of those projects, skate park is one in particular, we talked about that for 15 years. He said, you know, if this is worth doing, let's do it. You know, as far as tone goes, I respect his tone. I think it's, he has a different management style. I'd say different than what I've personally seen in a city manager from Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Levitt. I believe, at least the folks that I talked to in his staff, that his staff respects him.
Thank you, Steve. Billy?
Well, he came from good stock, number one. I mean, I have no problem with him whatsoever. He was stationed Fort Rainwater, Alaska, or the same place where I was stationed at before going to Vietnam. He's well-educated. I have no problem with him whatsoever. His tone, as far as I'm concerned, is perfect. And yeehaw to the Colonel.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
First of all, I'd like to thank him for his service in the military. I appreciate that. But I do have some concerns. Running a military base for the government and as we know, the federal government is trillions of dollars in debt. City of Janesville, we have to have a balanced budget every year. So, we have to be careful on how we spend our money. And we have, and spending our money in, not only on things, but on people. And soon after the new city manager came, we lost some top people, very experienced people that went to other cities. So, I have some concerns about that, but I'll hold my reservations until I have to, on the council and have to deal with it then. But at this point, I'm just going to hold my reserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We will now be beginning with Jim. He's starting over again. Jim, as a member of the Janesville City Council, how would you maintain the balance between being supportive of the city's staff and not becoming merely a rubber stamp for their ideas?
One of the things that I pride myself on is I, and if you watch some of the meetings, I ask questions and I ask a lot of them. That's from my 40 years of management experience. I challenge them. I try to do it in a very professional manner. As far as rubber stamping things, I, that's not the way I'm built. I question, I have them explain, I have them give details. I'm probably more kind of a pain in the neck to a lot of them, but I enjoy doing that. I visited the transit center today, the director out there, to get an idea of how they run their facility out there, get a better idea. I enjoy talking one-on-one with our staff, which I might add is very professional, really respond very well, and I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, Jim. Rich?
You know, it's an important thing to understand exactly what the role of the city council is versus the role of running day-to-day operations within the city. City council is a policymaking body. City council adopts plans. We hire a manager to implement those plans and we want to make sure that those plans are implemented effectively in the most cost-effective fashion possible. I don't see the council as being a rubber stamp to anything. You have a very diverse council with seven very independent thinkers that have all sorts of interests in making sure we can do our job as primarily policymakers and ensuring that the staff is able to do their job as implementers of those policies that we've adopted.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
Well, I just want to thank our city staff for what they do every day. I'm very proud of what we have. I think that to not be a rubber stamp, I listen to all folks. Whether you're a city worker, you live in Janesville, or you just want to give me a call and talk, I'll listen to anybody. I think that that's the key thing there, is not being a rubber stamp means you take all viewpoints into consideration every time you push yes or no on the buttons up at the podium there. So, that's how I would take a look at it, is make sure you consider everybody every single time you take a vote.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
You know, Rich hit it on the head. The city council's not about the day-to-day. And as a former director at a local credit union, I learned that and understood what the role of a, at the time, director, this being council. It is for our leader, city manager, to manage the day-to-day and it is for us as a council to guide them and direct policy. As far as the rubber stamp, I don't see a correlation there. I will say that listening to the citizens, whether it be at the coffee shop or at a listening session, is probably the best way to get across the messages of what you want us to do from a policy standpoint.
Thank you, Steve. Billy?
No question. I'm not going to rubber stamp anything until I get the complete knowing of what's there and how it is looked at and where the money's going to come to pay for it. Taxpayers are already getting charged enough for what they are getting for services. So, I'm not rubber stamping. They're going to tell me where the money's going to come from first. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
Yep. My eight years on the council, there was nothing that was rubber stamped that I can recall. Sometimes there are some pretty mundane items will come before you. Someone's well might fail and they're going to get annexed into the city, that type of deal, where all we have to do is approve the annexation and the rezoning of it. But then there are more complicated items that come before us. You know, we passed the no-smoking ordinance in restaurants and bars while I was on the council. We passed the SOB ordinance, the Sexual Orientated Business Ordinance on the council. And you would get a recommended, recommendation from city staff, but you really had to go and get on the internet and other sources to try and find out what other cities were doing and what the ramifications may or may not be for passing the ordinance. So, it's just a recommendation from the staff on big items like that. It's really up to the council member to do the research.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
The last thing I would be is a rubber stamp. I actually ran on a platform of abolishing the Dane County executive position because I thought it would be a good way to save money. It was $116,000 position and there was actually a, I ran on the platform of abolishing that position and I've, I want to bring new ideas and try to find some new solutions. And the last thing I would be is a rubber stamp. I think we need to look at all options. We need to live within our means. Fiscal responsibility is one of the most important things right now. If you look at where this country's heading, you know, as I said earlier, for decades, we've been passing the tab on to the next generation. And I think the last thing we need right now is to rubber stamp anything.
Thank you, Spencer. So, for this round, we're beginning with Rich. And this is a question from the audience, Rich. What have the newer state laws done to or for local control?
I think we have a long, rich history and tradition of the state legislature and various governors who have done a wonderful job of attempting to stymie the whole concept of local control to any degree they possibly can. You can go back to when state shared revenue was frozen back in the early 2000s. It was frozen at a time when Janesville had a reputation as being very prudential, very good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And we got penalized as a result of that. And quite honestly, that's a zero-sum game. There's going to be winners and then it's going to be losers. And I look forward to the opportunity to have that conversation with the good folks. We have tax levy limits. We have expenditure limits. It's the Great Monte, as I like to call it, because our operations budgets are such that our expenses go up just like your home budgets go up. But we're constrained by the state in terms of how we can generate dollars. We need to look at revenue sources as opposed to living within the restraints of state government.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
I think that over the past few years, as far as local control goes, we've got a real issue on our hands. Since 2011, the state legislator has forwarded local control around 100 times. I think we have a long road ahead of us that we need to take a look at, whether it be allowing cities to set their own sales tax as far as with that half a percent and what they do with their own money. With shared revenue, there's a long road ahead of us and I'll be the first to tell you, I'll be calling all of our local representatives right away so that we can go in and express Janesville's issues that we have going forward.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
It's definitely had a major impact, obviously, in Janesville with where we're sitting. Somebody mentioned there's winners and losers and unfortunately, Janesville is definitely the loser in shared revenue. And it's becoming more and more difficult. You know, we're talking 800,000 is that number that keeps floating around for next year. Look at the following year, it's another 600,000 as of right now. These are real numbers and we need to have, we need to start with dialogue. We need to have good conversation and a strong message to not only our local representatives that are working for us in Madison, but we need to somehow get those inroads for support, again, on that half percent sales tax, tax if possible, for long-term growth.
Thank you, Steve. Billy?
Well, the, I heard this morning, Lloyd was asking for more shared revenue. They're already getting 480 per person and we're only getting $80 per person. And they're asking for more. All I can say is the people up northern part of Wisconsin, some of them are only getting, they're getting less than that. So, it's not equal all over the whole state, period. Milwaukee gets better than what we, if anybody. So, it's time to really start chewing our representatives out, vote them out of office, get them out of there. I don't care if they're Democrat, Republican, Independent, if they're in there, they ain't listening, there's the door. So, it's time for us to really look at it and see what we got. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
I guess I can't think of any laws that have been passed in Madison lately that have been any good for the city of Janesville. I found it kind of interesting tonight. I looked on my Facebook page and I have a classmate who's a mayor in Florida of a very wealthy community. And he posted a editorial, and I believe it was from the Orlando Sentinel, that they seem to have the same problem down there. Just of the editorial was that they were requesting all of the state legislators to run for city council in their local community to see just how bad it is. And maybe that's what we need to do here in Wisconsin is instead of just being up in Madison and being surrounded by reality, they need to run for local office and see how tough it is to make ends meet here in Janesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
Could you repeat the question?
What have the newer state laws done for local control?
What have the newer state laws done for local control?
It came from the audience, yeah. So, I don't know exactly what they intended there.
I guess, that was the whole question.
What have the newer state laws done for local control?
Well, I guess... Well, I, I guess, I'm not sure what, what, what you're asking. What have the newer state laws done for local control? Have they expanded local control? Have they?
I don't know. I didn't make the question.
I, I think, local control has been as it always has been.
Okay. Thank you, Spencer. Jim?
Certainly, all of the new laws have restricted local control. There are many, many items in our state statutes that limit local control. One quick example, the legislator from Mike Spritzer from Lloyd tried to change a statute where the local council can decide whether a city manager can live, has to live in that city or not. He's got nowhere with that. In my opinion, should that not be a local decision? Why does the state statutes govern that? So, to answer your question, they have done nothing to improve local control. And many of our state statutes are, are very restricting, restricting to local control. And I can make several other examples if I have time.